Good evening. I apologize for my tardiness. But let's get right to it. Can I have a motion to the minutes from the May tenth, two thousand and seventeen? Oh, yeah. Thanks. Before I do that, do a roll.
Remember the list present?
The member being present.
The member being present.
The member being present.
Remember me present?
Remember Barry present?
Okay. So there's been a motion made to accept the minutes from the May tenth meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The first item is a continued public hearing.
And we're getting going, right, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we are. Continued public hearing for one eighty-nine, two sixty-three Hancock Street, on Quincy MBTA station. Certificate of Consistency, planning board case two oh one seven dash COC dash oh two, continued from our April twelfth meeting. Now, we've taken testimony, so I think unless there is need to take additional testimony, ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, please.
Point of clarification, I believe at the last meeting of this, public testimony was closed. We were going to accept written testimony, but I do believe public testimony was closed on this case.
Did we receive any written?
We did not.
Okay. All right. I'll look to the Department.
Sorry, is Paul Jakes in the audience from Woodard and Curran? Paul, thank you. No. Mr. Leader, it would appear that the city's independent peer review engineer has been delayed making his report to the Board. The Department is prepared to make a recommendation on this case. We could move to that, or we could pause and come back to the matter at a later date. I see Attorney Harnes is standing up.
Let me ask this question. I assume that the peer review report has been melded or included within the recommendation of the Department?
That is correct. I worked with Mr. Jakes, the independent peer review engineer, on constructing the recommendation for the Department.
I don't know if the Board's wishing we progressed or wait for Mr. Jakes.
I'm fine progressing. You need a motion to that?
Yep, okay. All right. So let's do that. All right. The Department's recommendation. Well, Mr. Harnes, would you like?
No, at this point, no, we'll just leave for the Department's recommendation. I know the applicant has worked extensively with the city, with the peer review, and the Board can go forward to hear it.
All right. After consideration of the revised plans and comments received from the outside peer review engineer, city departments, the planning department recommends approval of the certificate of consistency under Quincy Center zoning ordinance Title Seventeen, Section eight point five, transit-oriented districts, with the following conditions. Condition number one, the applicant and their design team have been coordinating with the city and city consultants during the development of the North Quincy MBTA station redevelopment. As such, there continues to be ongoing coordination between all parties and design teams to facilitate the respective designs and maintain a comprehensive vision of the North Quincy MBTA station redevelopment. Subsection A of this condition, any future plan revisions, including but not limited to site, utility, landscape, erosion, and sedimentation control and construction management, shall be submitted to the planning department for administrative review and approval prior to the submittal for any associated permits and prior to any construction being performed. Subsection B of this condition, the applicant shall submit a final set of comprehensive plans addressing all revisions and modifications made for consistency with permit conditions and/or through further design coordination with city representatives for administrative review and approval by the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Condition number two, the applicant shall coordinate with the appropriate city departments to identify all necessary permits, such that applications can be reviewed as needed by the city and their consultants. Condition number three, the proposed project area has filed for a MiPA certificate from the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs on the draft environmental impact report, EEA number one five six one four, and will soon be filing a final environmental impact report. The applicant shall comply with any applicable requirements of the certificate and shall notify the planning department if the FBIR certificate is amended or modified after it finalized. Condition number four, the applicant is subject to the City of Quincy Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance and shall be responsible for adhering to the decision of the Quincy Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee for this project. Condition number five, prior to the issuance of a final certificate of occupancy for the proposed project, the applicant shall submit a signage submittal package to the planning department. The submittal shall identify the location, design, and installation of all signs associated with the proposed project or portion of the proposed project as applicable. To the extent the applicant has not yet determined final tenant or other signage at the time of the submittal, the applicant may submit design criteria to account for such signs. As tenants for the retail component of the proposed project are determined, such tenants will be responsible for submitting a proposed retail signage submittal to the planning department for review and approval. Condition number six, prior to the filing for a final certificate of occupancy for the proposed project, the applicant shall submit a checklist to the planning director in order to confirm consistency with these conditions. Condition number seven, following the planning board's approval of a certificate of consistency for a project, the applicant whose project has received such approval may make application to the planning board for changes to the project. Before doing so, however, the applicant shall first submit a request to the planning director for determination whether the change or changes to be requested are material or not. If the planning director determines the changes to not be material, the applicant shall not be required to submit an application to the planning board. Instead, the applicant will revise its plans accordingly and file them with the planning department, in which event the revised plan shall be treated as the approved plans under the certificate of consistency. If the planning director determines that the changes to be requested are material, then the applicant will submit to the planning board an application requesting the planning board's approval. The application for approval of a change shall reference all pertinent portions of the approved original application with any approved amendments. The planning board's review of the application for material change shall be limited to said material change and be processed in the same manner as the original application for certificate of consistency. In determining whether a change is material, the decision shall be based on whether the scope of the project is expanded or its impacts materially increased. Condition number eight, the applicant and their contractor shall provide a construction management plan to the planning department and Inspectional Services Department for review and approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. Condition number nine, the applicant shall develop and submit dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity consistent with typical plans of similar development projects in Quincy. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number ten, the applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on-site, which will include the name, contact information for on-call pest control company, consistent with the typical plans of similar for development projects in Quincy. Said rodent control plan shall be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to obtaining their building permits. Site construction stormwater management system conditions. Condition number eleven, the applicant shall be required to obtain a stormwater management permit from the City of Quincy Department of Public Works, which shall be recorded with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds prior to the start of construction. Number twelve, the applicant shall continue to coordinate with the applicable utility connections with the City of Quincy Department of Public Works. Number thirteen, prior to any building permits being issued, the applicant will perform a water flow test with the city's water department. Number fourteen, the applicant shall be required to submit plans stamped by a Massachusetts structural professional engineer for the proposed retaining walls to the Inspectional Services Department as part of the building permit application prior to the start of construction. Number fifteen, the applicant shall submit a stormwater operation and maintenance plan, which shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds and will include the following: A, stormwater management system owner; B, party responsible for operation and maintenance; C, an estimated operations and maintenance budget; and D, a maintenance log form. Condition number sixteen, in conformance with the state stormwater regulations, the owner shall be required to submit a copy of the completed stormwater operation and maintenance plan, inspection schedule, and evaluation checklist form stamped by a professional engineer to the City of Quincy Department of Public Works in order to document compliance with approved O and M plan. Number seventeen, pending results of CCTV investigations recommended by Woodard and Curran and agreed to by the applicant, the applicant shall undertake Hunt Street and Newbury Street sewer improvements. Number eighteen, the applicant shall make inflow and infiltration contributions as required by City of Quincy ordinance. Number nineteen, one week prior to any land disturbance activities, the applicant shall conduct an onsite inspection with the City of Quincy and/or its, the city's designated representatives to observe the erosion controls installed at the site and review the erosion controls anticipated to be employed during construction. Number twenty, at any point during construction, the applicant shall allow the City of Quincy indoor city's designated representative to enter the site for the purpose of making observations as to the compliance of site construction with approved site plans and conditions of approving. Number twenty-one, upon completion of construction, the applicant's engineer shall provide a report to the planning department certifying that the stormwater management systems was installed in accordance to the approved plans. The report shall include a certification that the excavations of the proposed treebox filters and rain garden were inspected prior to backfilling, and as build, the stormwater management system shall be provided with the report. Traffic conditions. Number twenty-two, the hours of construction activities and delivery of materials will be as follows unless extended hours are approved by the chief of police: A, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday; B, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday; and C, all construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless same are approved by the chief of police. Number twenty-three, the applicant shall provide preliminary and final design plans and supporting documentation for the proposed all ways stop operation at the Sagamore Street Commander Shay Boulevard intersection. Improvements shall be subject to review and approval by the Quincy Department of Traffic and Parking and installed by the applicant prior to the issuance of a building occupancy permit. Number twenty-four, the applicant shall provide preliminary and final design plans and supporting documentation for the proposed Hancock Street MBTA driveway slash Hunt Street intersection improvements and Sagamore Street realignment. Improvements shall be subject to review and approval by the Quincy Department of Traffic and Parking and installed by the applicant prior to the issuance of a building occupancy permit. Number twenty-five, the proponent shall consider relocating the MBTA drop-off area away from the main entry aisle to reduce congestion in this area of the site, if approved by the MBTA. Number twenty-six, the applicant shall provide final design plans for bicycle improvements on-site and within the study area. Improvements shall include both indoor and outdoor options and be subject to review and approval by the Quincy Department of Traffic and Parking and installed by the applicant prior to the issuance of a building occupancy permit. Number twenty-seven, the applicant shall submit the following vehicle turn analysis prior to the issuance of a building permit. Plans shall be subject to review and approval by the Quincy Fire Department and Quincy Department of Traffic and Parking: A, tractor-trail access egress at the main site driveway and Sagamore Street driveway as appropriate; B, residential moving and delivery trucks, single unit, and others as applicable; C, Quincy Fire Department emergency response vehicles, typically a ladder truck, and required circulation into and within the site; D, delivery vehicle in Sagamore Street residential slash retail docking area; and E, refuse truck access to dumpster locations demonstrating adequate circulation area and height clearance. Number twenty-eight, the following transportation demand management measures at a minimum shall be implemented by the applicant prior to the issuance of a building occupancy permit: A, designate a full-time onsite transportation coordinator to oversee transportation issues, including parking, car sharing, moving trucks, who may have, who may have this task in addition to other revenue-producing employment; B, provide indoor and outdoor bicycle parking spaces capable of accepting security locks; C, provide shared parking between the MBTA parking and residential use to minimize overall parking supply needs; D, provide electric car charging spaces on-site; E, promote alternative modes of transportation through welcome packages to all new commercial and residential tenants; F, provide preferential parking for alternative fuel vehicles and car pools where appropriate; G, conduct cost, conduct post-development traffic and parking monitoring and tenant travel mode surveys annually with results submitted to the City of Quincy for a minimum of a five-year period, beginning one year after initial occupancy; H, optimize traffic signal timings for the Hancock Street-Glover Street Avenue intersection for weekday morning and evening peak period, subject to the review and approval by the Quincy Department of Traffic and Parking; and I, reconfigure Sagamore Street to provide two-way travel, sidewalks, crosswalks, and realigned approach to Hancock Street, subject to review and approval by the Quincy Department of Traffic and Parking. That was a lot, but that concludes the Department's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any questions, Mr. Stevens?
And I'm informed that Paul Jakes from Woodard and Curran has arrived.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, Paul Jakes, Registered Registered Professional Engineer with Woodard and Curran, lead peer review consultant for the MBTA project. Also have a colleague today, Daniel Mills from MDM Transportation, who assisted in the review of the traffic components of the project. And Westling Architects was also a part of your team, responsible for reviewing the architectural components of the project. We've been working directly with the applicant's design team since late December, reviewing the different components of the project. We've had several face-to-face meetings to discuss our comments and concerns. Included other city departments as, as appropriate for those meetings. We issued our final letter report yesterday to the planning department, which included recommended conditions of approval that were incorporated into the decision read by Mr. Stevens. One thing to note is that the applicant has responded in writing to a number of our concerns and comments accordingly, but has not provided revised plans or documents at this time to back those statements up. So we will continue to work with the Department and the applicant to resolve those, those issues. And we can answer any questions that you may have on the stormwater utility and traffic reviews at this time.
Any questions, Boyd? Okay. Any questions of Mr. Stevens' final recommendation?
I would ask the Board, if we can move forward in the pool, if we can have this project. I will say that the planning department, Mr. Stevens, who clearly mentioned that he worked hard with the developer, the applicant, and this, and this was not something that happened overnight, it was through a long course of months and months of working together. We got here from the city's thought, what they wanted to do with the MBTA, thinking what they wanted to do with developer, but we're also here because the applicant has worked, and the planning department is an incredible draw, working together with the applicant at this time. So we're right now, would ask the Board to be bold and to give this matter forward.
So is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to take an item out of order on our business portion of the meeting, which is forty-six Walcott Road, planning board case two oh one seven, A and R dash oh three, review and determination to endorse approval not required, forty-six Walcott Road, planning board case two oh one seven dash A and R three.
Look, I can't hear you.
Okay.
I don't know if the microphone's working or whatnot, but I can't hear anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me try it again. I'm taking an item out of order, it's under the business meeting, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. It's partially my fault, not the microphone's. Forty-six Walcott Road, planning board case two oh one seven, A and R dash oh three, review and determination to endorse an approval not required for forty-six Walcott Road, planning board case two oh one seven, A and R. I have some pieces of correspondence. The first one is from Council Palmucci. "I've been contacted by neighboring residents at forty-six Walcott Road, project proposal expressing their concerns about blasting. I encourage the planning board to take every reasonable measure to ensure the neighbors' properties are not damaged as a result of blasting. Perhaps a performance bond or a letter of credit to ensure any damage from the blasting would quickly be resolved." And a piece of correspondence from Jerry and Barbara Pellegrini for, live at eighteen Walcott Road, to address the Susan. Karen, I forgot to mention that we reached out to Jay Duca on May twenty-fourth and six six, our concerns by email. He was out of the office on five twenty-four and returning six one. We spoke to a woman at his office, the best time to set up a meeting was email. Therefore, we sent a six six email. He has not responded to either inquiry. Please give this to Richard Mead, we are very upset that our, that our already built home questions how our home conforms to the internal intentional earth removal that our insurance, Quincy Mutual Insurance, will not cover. Thank you again for the time, signed by Jerry and Barbara Pellegrini. And subsequent, let me see what the order is. It's also from Jerry and Barbara Pellegrini, concerning our compensation today, six twenty. When I came to review the plans of forty-six Walcott Road, which abuts my property, you suggested I write to you about my wife's and my tenants at the planning board meeting on six twenty-one. If we are unable to attend, as my wife's sister is, is having cardiac procedure at MGH tomorrow, my wife is also on call as a nurse, you suggested we write to express our concern about the potential damage to our house on the building at forty-six Walcott Road. You mentioned that we, we would share our concerns with the planning board chairman, Richard Mead, this property, which is subdivided piece of property sold by our neighbor at seventy-six Walcott Road. Property is all rock, and we are concerned that removal of it would cause structural damage to our house. Our own homeowner's insurance will not cover us for intentional earth removal. The builders assure us that he has a million dollars coverage, but we are concerned about the subcontractor's covers. Our house is twenty-four feet from the property line, and we want to be assured that we are covered for any damage that's caused to our house, and make sure, make sure that our concerns are voiced, and also included three pitches of the rock that's immediately above our property that's on the line. The approval not required plan, approval not required is something out of chapter forty-one, under the subdivision control. And, I'm sorry, and it's a determination as to whether a lot, a lots can be subdivided, provided they have the required frontage and the minimum lot area, which this, this lot meets that requirement. In terms of, in terms of the concerns on the abutters, in terms of vulnerability, if you will, okay, as a result of blasting, I think the process is still the same. There used to be a committee that was made up of the city engineer and the building inspector, then building inspector, now inspectional services, and I think a fire department member, who do what I would consider a pre-blast survey. And I may be speaking out of term, but that's the process was when I was out there a number of years ago. And for the protection of the abutters, so that if there is a claim of damage, then there would have been a pre-blast survey, okay, which would have shown it. And if indeed there was damage, then the onus is on the applicant or the applicant's representatives with blast to correct or rectify the damage. And I assume it's got to be the same way. And, you know, I would encourage, and obviously, the abutters have reached out to Jay Duca. Unfortunately, we're unable to contact him, get in touch with him, but I'm sure Mr. Duca's going to tell him the same thing. So hopefully, he will, because that will lay their fears. They're protected, okay, or they will be protected. But again, the key of the whole thing is a pre-blast survey. Now, how far that pre-blast survey goes, that's always a question, but, you know, the neighborhood probably wants to make sure that they're protected, so they probably want to, probably speaking out of term, but they want to make sure that they're protected with a pre-blast survey, so in the event that something catastrophic happens. You can see what it was. Excuse me, what it was. So the Board has, has no other choice except to endorse the approval not required, because it meets the requirements under the subdivision, under chapter forty-one, which is the subdivision control of common. But obviously, the key player would be the Inspection Services Director, Mr. Duca, and I'm sure that Jay will get back to them as they pay. Hopefully, that'll lay some of the fears of some of the people that may be here tonight. I know some of them were open when I came in, so. Okay. We're going back to? Yeah, okay. The next item is a continued public hearing from forty-three to seventy-three, Dennis Ryan Parkway, Chestnut Place, Certificate of Consistency, planning board case two oh one six, COC dash oh three, which was continued from our May tenth, two thousand and seventeen meeting. We will, I assume that we'll just close the public hearing and then move forward?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and for this approval, it's also the third item on the agenda, which is the one twenty-one A agreement. As this Board has seen over the recent meetings, through a Home Rule Petition update in the fall, the city in its urban renewal district has the ability to enter into one twenty-one agree, one twenty-one A agreements with the urban renewal developments. So in the case of the Chestnut Place COC, the Board now has before it the Certificate of Consistency as well as the one twenty-one A recommendation. So the Department is planning to move forward with the recommendation?
Want to take it again?
We could.
Well, let's, let's deal with the first one, which is the COC.
Which is the COC, and the Department has asked two of its engineering firms, working under contract to the City of Quincy on urban renewal activities, to review for this Board the COC and the one twenty-one A. For the Certificate of Consistency, I'd asked the engineer, Mr. Dave White from Woodard and Curran, to come forward, and after that, Mr. Jeff Facher, an architect from DSC Group, to follow, to give their review recommendation to the Board. Once they're done, I'd be prepared to read the recommendation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'm David White, I'm a senior principal with Woodard and Curran. As Rob indicated, we were engaged to conduct a peer review of the COC documents in front of you. In addition to that engagement, we are serving as the city engineering consultant for many downtown municipal infrastructure improvements that are currently ongoing and planned. We conducted the review principally focused on civil engineering-related activities, drainage utility, the access, grading, and stormwater compliance. The results of our review are contained in our June eighth letter that you have before you. We concluded that the project is in general components with the LDA and requirements of the COC. We've identified several items that will require future coordination efforts as the city finalizes their plan. plans of the municipal infrastructure that surrounds all four sides of the applicant's property in question. The, with that, in understanding that, we developed a list of recommendations for consideration for condition of approval. That is contained in the letter as well. And with that, we also provided a recommendation for administrative approval process as these coordination issues continue to get resolved with the application against the city. Any questions?
Any questions, the board?
Good evening, I'm Jeff Fasser with B S C Group, Registered Landscape Architect, Certified Planner, and as Rob mentioned, been providing advice to the city for ten years now on this urban renewal project or activities within the designated urban renewal area. So, with that in mind, again, we were asked to review the C O C application more towards an eye of, is it consistent with the city's vision for the urban renewal area, known as the Quincy Center Urban Revitalization District? And is it also consistent with the guidelines were developed for that area? So, we reviewed the plan, made some comments in our memo to the planning department dated June seventh. A lot of the items that we commented on were also commented on in Woodard and Curran review of this project also. So, I feel we're consistent on those items, and we also agree with Woodard and Curran's recommendation that a number of these items cannot be addressed until the city addresses certain site development and site improvement projects around the site. So, we agree that kind of administrative process, so that as the city finalizes plans for its improvements, the developer could then come in and finalize their plans for some items that we pointed out in our memo is certainly appropriate at this time. Specifically, some of the things that we commented on were the specific landscape treatment of the developer site itself, the design of the park that the developer will build adjacent to their site. That park will be located at the corner of Cottage and Chestnut Street, and then some other items such as the public art requirement that's required in the design guidelines, and screening of any utility and service areas associated with their project. But again, I think a lot of those things will evolve as the city's plans for infrastructure improvements around the site evolve. Bottom line, we are supportive of the C O C application. If you have any questions, you may have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the board. I know Mr. White indicated a number of public improvements that are the, site improvements that are the responsibility of the city. I'm happy to report that this past Monday night, the city council voted to approve the Quincy Center DIF bond authorization Phase Two in the amount of eighty million dollars to undertake all of these site improvements that are needed to make this project, as well as the C O C that was approved by this body in May, work. So, we're real confident that we can get moving very quickly on these urban renewal plans. With that said, after consideration of the revised plans and comments received from outside peer reviewers and city departments, the planning department recommends approval of the certificate of consistency under Quincy Center zoning ordinance Title Seventeen, Section Eight Point Five, I'm sorry, sorry, Title Seventeen, Section Eight Point Three. That was a misstatement. Okay. The applicant and its design team have been coordinating with the city and city review consultants during the review of the proposed project. The applicant shall address to the satisfaction of the planning department all outstanding comments identified by the city review departments and city review consultants as reflected in the correspondence identified. The planning department shall issue a letter documenting that all outstanding comments have been satisfactorily addressed prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number two, the applicant shall submit a final set of comprehensive plans addressing all revisions and modifications made for consistency with permit conditions and through further design coordination with city representatives for administrative review and approval by the planning department prior to the issuance of a building permit. Such comprehensive plans as so approved shall serve as the comprehensive plans approved under this decision. Number three, following, following the planning department's administrative approval of the comprehensive plans, the applicant may make application to the planning board for changes to the project. Before doing so, however, the applicant shall first submit a request to the director of planning for determination whether that change or changes to be requested are material or not. If the director of planning determines the changes are not material, the applicant shall not be required to submit an application to the planning board. Instead, the applicant will revise the comprehensive plans accordingly and file them with the planning board, in which event, the revised plan shall be treated as the comprehensive plans under this decision. If the director of planning determines that the changes to be requested are material, then the applicant will submit to the planning board and the mayor an application requesting the planning board's approval. An application for a material change shall be processed in the same manner as an original application for approval under Section Six of M G L, sorry, strike that, strike that line, please. Actually, Section Six, M G L, Chapter One Twenty-One A. In determining whether a change is material, the decision shall be based on whether the scope of the project is expanded or its impacts materially increased. The applicant agrees to the city's use of independent consultants for review and comment on the plan modifications submitted for administrative review and approval and determined by the city director of planning to be material. Furthermore, the applicant shall be required to satisfactorily address any comments of such consultants prior to the planning board's approval of such plan modifications. Number four, the applicant and their contractor shall submit a draft construction management plan for the project to the director of inspectional services and city director of planning for their review and approval. The construction management plan shall utilize such portions of the Hancock Lot for construction-related activities as the mayor shall approve. The applicant will address satisfactorily prior to the commencement of construction any comments on the proposed construction management plan as they are provided by the city's review consultants. Once the applicant's responses are, once the applicant's responses are, the applicant shall submit a revised construction management plan, which shall encompass the responses to such comments, and such construction management plan shall be treated as part of the comprehensive plans for the project. The construction management plan shall include procedures, A, to limit to the extent practical and sufficient to reasonably enable the applicant to construct the project without premiums, the use of Hancock Lot for the storage and fabrication of construction materials, and the maintenance of a construction trailer and other construction-related appurtenances for the project, and B, to maintain the remainder of the Hancock Lot for public parking and pedestrian access to Hancock Lot parking for its patrons. The applicant and its contractor shall not obstruct side-by-side construction or interfere with adjacent construction areas for the city garage on the Hancock Lot. Number five, the applicant shall coordinate with the appropriate city departments to identify all necessary permits, such that applications can be reviewed as needed by the city and city review consultants. It is anticipated that necessary permits will include M P D E S, N I P D's permit, City of Quincy Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Permit, City of Quincy Drain Permit, and Street Opening Permits. This list is not intended to be comprehensive, and additional permits may be necessary. The nature and scope of the proposed project has been previously reviewed under the M E P R certificate of the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs on the final environmental impact report for New Quincy Center dated December fourteenth, two thousand and twelve, E E A number one four seven eight zero, the certificate. Under the certificate, the city has assumed the role of the redeveloper and as such, shall be responsible for the performance of any and all mitigation applicable to the proposed project under Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act. Number seven, the applicant shall coordinate with the city department of public works or applicable private utility companies in undertaking the applicant's sole expense the utility connections. The applicant shall develop and submit a dust control plan to the department health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number nine, the applicant shall develop a road and control plan, contingency plan, prior to the commencement of construction activities on site, which will include the name and contact information for an on-call pest control company. Said road and control plan shall be developed and submitted to the department of health for review and approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number ten, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy for the proposed project, the applicant shall submit a final signage submittal package to the planning department for administrative review and approval. The submittal shall identify the location, design, and installation of all signs associated with the project. To the extent the applicant has not yet determined final tenant or other signage at the time of this submittal, the applicant may submit design criteria to account for such signs and incorporation, once approved by the planning board in the comprehensive plans. As tenants for the retail component of the project are determined, such tenants shall be responsible for submitting a proposed retail signage submittal to the planning department for review and approval. Number eleven, the hours of construction activities and delivery of materials will be as follows, seven A M. to five P M. Monday through Friday, eight A M. to four P M. on Saturday. All construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless same are approved by the chief of police for Sunday activities. And number twelve, prior to the issuance of a building permit, Chestnut Place shall be accepted as a public way, and the property shall have been created as a separate lot under Massachusetts Subdivision Control Law. That would conclude the department's recommendation.
Any questions from the board members? Is there a second? Discussion, all those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, Urban Renewal Consultant Jeff Fasser. We also had asked Jeff to take a look at the proposed one-twenty-one A agreement as put forth, and is prepared to say a few words on that.
Good evening again. As Rob mentioned, I was asked to look at the one-twenty-one A agreement, which is really focusing on the designation of this project within an urban renewal area within that area. So, as you know, this project is located within the Quincy Center Urban Renewal District area, and as part of the establishment of this area, it was determined that certain actions were necessary to help stimulate economic development in this part of the downtown area. Also, as part of designating a urban renewal area, the city has the ability to designate certain developers for key sites within an urban renewal area. And in fact, the Quincy, the proposed Quincy, Quincy Chestnut Place LLC was identified as a designated developer for this portion of the Hancock Lot. And once that designation was made, then the city was, again, as allowed by the urban renewal program, is allowed to start negotiating with that developer and developing plans in concert with that developer to assure that the project meets the goals and objectives and certain requirements of the urban renewal plan for the entire downtown area as it was developed. And based on my review and coordination with the developer, this project certainly does meet the overall vision and goals and objectives of the larger urban renewal plan for this area here. In addition, as a result of that negotiation with the developer, certain improvements are, can be agreed to that would be mutually beneficial to the city as well as to the developer, and as a result of these negotiations and back and forth, indeed, the plans before you do reflect some of those mutually beneficial improvements that will be made primarily by the developer. So, in summary, in my review of the plan and the proposed project, it is in compliance and certainly supports the city's larger vision for this near downtown urban renewal area, and, I don't know why you should not approve. If you have any answer to the questions, you may have.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the recommended conditions by the departments, as they are the same as the certificate of consistency, except for condition number thirteen.
Go ahead, read. Jeff, please.
Okay. Condition thirteen to the one-twenty-one A program reads, "Prior to the issuance of a building permit for the proposed project, the applicant shall submit to the planning department a summary statement demonstrating that there are loan and equity proceeds available to the applicant sufficient to fund the probable costs of the construction of the proposed project."
Mr. Chairman, they're reading one-twenty-one A motions to approve.
Want to deal with them individually? Let's go back to the motion to waive the reading, okay? So, there's a motion to waive the reading as recommended of the conditions from the department, except for the conditions as previously outlined. Is there a second to the motion? Second? Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, good.
The first motion to approve, to approve the proposed project under Section One Twenty-One A of Massachusetts General Law, subject to the conditions outlined by the planning department in its recommendation.
Okay, so there's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
The second is to consent to the information of Chestnut Place Limited Partnership and Entity under Section Three of Mass General Law, Chapter One Twenty-One A, and to issue a certificate under Section Six of Mass General Law, Chapter One Twenty-One A, and a special act, and to confirm that this decision shall serve as such certificate.
Is there a second to the motion? Discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
And third and final is to extend the period of exemption from local real estate taxes of the proposed project under Section Ten of Mass General Law, Chapter One Twenty-One A, for a period of twenty-five years.
Is there a second to the motion? Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Next item, continued public hearing for one to thirteen Newport Avenue Site Plan, Special Permit Planning Board Case Two Oh One Seven dash O One, continued from our May ten, two thousand seventeen meeting.
It's growing, yes, it is.
I don't have that problem.
Mr. Fleming? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of the rest of the development of the city. As you may remember, Mr. Chairman, we were here before the board a couple of meetings ago where we made a full presentation of the applicant's proposal, which at the time called for the construction of a one-hundred unit residential building at one to thirteen Newport Avenue, which included, which consisted of a five-story building with two levels of underground, or underleveled parking, garage parking. That proposal provided for one- That proposal provided for one space, one parking space per unit proposed, and it proposed access from Newport Avenue as well as Arlington to the street, as the site is surrounded by both Arlington Street and Newport Avenue and West Quanum Street. And there's no, very limited setbacks available for the building. And after our presentation that night, there were a number of questions that were raised by members of the, of the board and additional comments and concerns raised by the city's departments and the, and the Planning Department that we took to heart and have worked over the last number of months with the, each of the departments and the peer review engineers to address each and every one of those concerns. If you remember the night of, during the night of the hearing, there were questions raised about, about the architecture of the building. There were questions and concerns raised about the setback of the building from Arlington Street and the, and the request for additional landscaping both on Arlington Street and on West Quanum Street. There were concerns raised about the access to the garage on Newport Avenue. And there were requests made at that time by Mr. Barry for vignettes as to how the building will look and appear as you drive into the city or you come along Newport Avenue or West Quanum Street. We have now provided those vignettes, both in the smaller size sets that are before you, but are also available on the larger sets for the public to view as well. And I think that these vignettes really give you a wonderful image of what the building will appear to like at the time of completed construction. But in addition to those vignettes, we're all, we also made significant changes to the building. The new proposal now provides, after a number of meetings with the Planning Department, provides for eighty residential units, not one hundred, so a reduction of twenty residential units. And what that did is that eliminated the fifth floor of the building, so now the building is a four-story building over two connected levels of parking. Initially, the, the parking levels were not connected and therefore required access from both Newport Avenue and from Arlington Street. Those levels of parking are now connected, and that thereby eliminated the need for the access from Newport Avenue, which was, which was an area of concern. And now the only access to the, to the garage will be from Arlington Street. The reduction in number of units also allowed a reconfiguration of the parking in the garage and allows now for one point two five spaces per unit, which is consistent with the recommendation and the request of the Planning Department. Setbacks have now also been provided on Arlington Street specifically to mimic the setbacks that are provided for the hotel across the street on Arlington Street. A four-foot sidewalk will be created along Arlington Street in that location, and additional landscaping improvements will be made as well. And those are actually shown to some extent, or at least the image of that landscaping was showed to some extent on those vignettes and plans that we've provided to you. Modification and improvement was also made to the architecture of the building with greater detail on the façades, a revised roof line that provided some different levels on the roof. And as I indicated, we've provided the improved visuals of that plan. In addition to that, we've also had, in addition to the meetings that we've had with the Planning Department and the discussions we've had with peer review and the city departments, we also sought and obtained approval from the Conservation Commission and an order of conditions from the Conservation Commission because the site is located within a floodplain district, and that order of conditions is an issue and not appealed. And we met with City Council Ian Kane, who I understand has submitted a letter to this, to this board as well, who has expressed support for the proposal in light of these changes that have been made. And we had an opportunity to meet with the Conference Union representatives as well to discuss with them involvement in the, and an opportunity to be involved in the bidding process for the construction work for the proposal. It was a great meeting, and I know there's a number of representatives here tonight that may speak on this matter. So that's, those are the highlight of the changes that we've made. We're happy to talk in more detail and answer any questions that the board may have about these changes. The architects are here to talk about the architectural changes as well, and we can detail those changes if you'd like that are shown in the vignettes. But I think those pictures really speak a thousand words. They were really, they were nicely done, and I think it provides a great image of the building. So thank you.
Appreciate the update and change that the board has made. Questions on employment? Mr. Fleming? I think you've highlighted it enough. So it is a public hearing. For anybody who wishes to speak, to come forward, identify yourself. If you're not comfortable in speaking, there are signing sheets over on the window ledge that you can sign. Everybody wishing to speak on this issue. I just have a question, if that's okay? Good. How many units is, John Rochelle, Sixty-Two Grandwall Road, Quincy, Mass. How many units is this project?
It's now eighty.
It's now eighty?
Yeah.
So it was a hundred and went to eighty? And we have, how many parking spaces?
There's one point two five space, a hundred and one spaces.
A hundred and one spaces. When I was looking at the plans, the majority of these units are two-bedroom units?
The architects are there. There are fifty-one-one bedroom, four studios, so it's like fifty-five-one.
And so how many two-bedroom units are there?
Twenty-five.
Okay, twenty-five, twenty-five. I, I just, I just think that they need more parking than that. This is right next to the train station. There is no parking, you know, they either have to build less units or create more parking because every two-bedroom unit there, for every bedroom there is, there should be, you know, one parking place, you know? And there has to be some guest parking also, and there also has to be parking for people that work at that building, come there every day, and they're going to have to be sitting there. So there's no excess parking anywhere in that area. They're going to be closing down, taking away parking places from the North Quincy Parking Lot. So I would ask that you guys ask them to squeeze some more parking in. I know they can squeeze some more in. It might be expensive, parking isn't cheap, but it's something that is definitely needed. If they want to build a high-density unit like that next to the train station, then their parking should be more than self-sufficient. There should actually be extra parking for anyone that wants to come and visit that place. They shouldn't be a burden of parking on anyone, or I would deny this project. So unless they have more parking, I'm not in support of this. Anybody else wishing to speak? Didn't last time? Anybody wishing to speak? As I said, anybody wishing to be recorded, the sheets are over on the window ledge. Any questions for the board members? Number Barry.
Thank you very much for providing the schematics. Extremely helpful to visualize what it's going to look like from a number of different angles. Making sure that I am picturing the finished product correctly. When I look at the schematic planting plan and I look at the visual, if you're looking at the property from West Quanum Street, there's a massing of trees immediately to the left. They look like the trees are between the building and Newport Avenue. When I look at the schematic plan, it looks like that is instead going to be a ripper out slope, which I'm guessing will or will not have planting on it. I'm trying to visualize the finished product, whether there will be trees or not.
On that slope, I would recommend that we not plant on. My name is Mark Copse, I'm an MKA and a super architect. The slope is very steep and it's in a canyon. It's all very dark, so I don't think anything is going to thrive in that area. That's my recommendation.
Very helpful. So, so the trees in that picture then won't actually be there between the building and Newport?
No.
I think those exist today. That might be a picture of it.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that I was kind of visualizing the final product. Other than that, I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions for the board? Okay, I didn't entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second? All of the favor?
Aye.
The department's?